Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the February 13th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Zagajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Garpadian.
Here. Flag salute, Councilmember Sinanian. Would you read us in the flag salute?
Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. John Quincy Adams, sixth president of our United States and son of founding father and President John Adams, described the characteristics of leadership as follows: "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader." This evening, we pray for our city's leader, not only those in these chambers, but throughout our city, for every person who inspires, dreams, learns, and does more to help others become more and to do better for all who live and work in our city. Let us pray that our citizens are inspired by these decisions and actions of our council. We pray for the continued prosperity and vitality of our great city and for all those who call it home. We also pray for their brave sons and daughters who serve in our nation's armed forces and for all who await their safe return home. We pray for all this and peace tonight and always. Amen.
Maybe, please, have your report.
The agenda for the February 13th, 2018, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, February 9th, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next, please?
Presentation and appointments at 3:00 A.M., Agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, February 20th, 2018.
Mr. Takalian.
And Mayor Garpadian, members of the City Council. Next week's meetings will start with the Glendale Housing Authority meeting in the afternoon at 3:00. There's only one item, that's the approval of minutes on that agenda. That'll immediately be followed by a joint meeting of the Housing Authority and City Council. Again, there's one item from community development, and that's the execution of an affordable housing agreement and agreement to lease real property for a proposed affordable senior housing project at Fifth Street and Sonora. After that meeting, we'll have a special meeting of the City Council, again, in the afternoon. One report from Director of Community Development regarding intention to suspend activities and not levy assessments within the Adams Square Business Improvement District. City Council meeting in the evening has a number of consent items. At 4B is a report from Public Works regarding the household bulky and abandoned item collection services. The next four meetings are from Glendale Water and Power. The first is a report amending the city's existing agreement with CDM Constructors, Inc. for the operation and engineering services for Glendale Operable Unit for an additional five-year term. That'll be followed by another report regarding the master services agreement with advanced control systems for the electric SCADA system, followed by yet another report for awarding a contract for the pump replacements at Glen Oaks 968 Pump Station, and the final report from Glendale Water and Powers regarding the novation of an existing nine-and-a-half-year Western Systems power pool, power purchase agreement to BP Energy Company. Final report under consent is from the interim Chief of Police regarding recommendation to amend the professional services agreement with Ron Smith for forensic services. Under action items, the fire chief will propose the Fire Recruit Academy for fiscal year 2018, as well as provide a report on the purchase of an air compressor for Fire Station 21 as a sole source purchase. At 8C is a report from Water and Power regarding wireless communication facility lease agreement for property that the city owns at 807 Airway. And the final report that evening will be from the Director of Community Development regarding a variance for floor area ratio, parking exception, and combined Stage 1 and 2 design review for the proposed development of a hotel on city-owned property located 241 North Maryland Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Takalian. What's next, please? 3B is a proclamation designating February 2018 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month.
The proclamation, I believe Tara Peterson's here, from the YWCA. Tara?
Welcome.
Hi. First of all, I just want to thank the City Council and for recognizing February as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. One in three adolescents experience dating abuse each year. And according to a survey conducted by the California Healthy Kids in 2013, 46% of seventh graders reported having a girlfriend or a boyfriend, and 8% of those students reported experiencing physical violence from their girlfriend or boyfriend. By ninth grade, 50% of the students report having a girlfriend or boyfriend, and 10% of those students experienced physical violence. These numbers increase even further by the 11th grade, with 56% of the students reporting having a girlfriend or boyfriend, and 13% of those students experiencing physical dating abuse. And so, we think this matter is extremely important to our community, and we're excited that we'll be partnering with the Glendale Unified School District and a local mentoring program, Generation Next, to be doing some teen dating violence awareness activities. And I just want to share a little bit about what we're doing. We're launching a, excuse me, an educational poster campaign with the city Glendale Unified School District, and the campaign encourages students to ask what makes a healthy relationship. And those answers include speaking up, communicating honestly, respecting each other, creating healthy boundaries, and respecting each other's privacy. In addition, on March 8th, 2018, students from the Glendale Unified School District will be given the opportunity to explore healthy relationships and become a healthy relationship ambassador under the facilitation of our YWCA Domestic Violence Prevention Program staff. This half-day workshop will be hosted by YWCA Glendale and ABGU's Generation Next mentorship program, and we'll be bringing six local high schools to discuss behaviors that range from healthy, unhealthy, to abusive. And we think it's critical that teens that may be experiencing domestic violence are aware of the services that are offered, and we want folks to know that if they are experiencing any type of teen dating violence, they can call our domestic violence hotline at 888-999-7511, where we can provide confidential support. They can also call Anonis Muli as well. So, we just want to thank you again so much for taking a step in recognizing February as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month.
Excuse me. Can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat the phone number?
Yes, I'll repeat the phone number. The phone number is 888-999-7511. It's 24 hours, seven days a week.
Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for the great work that you do in our community. This is a very important issue, especially when some parents do not believe that this kind of violence happens. And if your parents don't believe you, you have a huge issue on your hands as a teenager. So, I think it's a great issue that we have to address, and I want to thank you for your work, not just on this issue, overall, the work that you do in our community. Now, a proclamation, it is a long one, but I'm going to try to read it with one breath.
Okay.
Whereas females between the ages of 16 to 24 are more vulnerable to intimate partner violence, experiencing abuse as a rate almost triple the national average, and one in three adolescent girls in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth. And whereas high school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at a greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. And whereas nearly half of teens who experience dating violence reported that incidents of abuse took place in a school building or a school grounds, and only 33% of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse. And 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue or admit they do not know if it is one. And whereas by providing young people with education about healthy relationships and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented. And whereas it is essential to raise community awareness and provide training for teachers, counselors, and school staff so that they may recognize with youth are exhibiting signs of dating violence. And whereas the establishment of Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month will benefit young people, their families, schools, and communities regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, or ethnicity. And whereas everyone has the right to a safe and healthy relationship and to be free from abuse. Now, therefore, I, Wartang Garpadian, Mayor of Glendale, do hereby proclaim February 2018 Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month throughout Glendale. That...
Thank you so much. If I may, Tara, I want to make one more comment, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. I just wanted to mention that one of my proudest accomplishments, when I was on the Commission on the Status of Women and working with the Domestic Violence Task Force here in Glendale, and of course, the YWCA was a part of that task force, and we were able to get a curriculum in the ninth grade in all of our GUSD schools about safe dating, what is acceptable behavior, what is an acceptable relationship. And that was six to eight years ago, so it is still going on, and I'm very proud of that, and it's a very, very important program, and I'm so glad that you're taking it to a new level. And good luck, and I know it will be well received. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. And thank you all so much on behalf of YWCA Glendale and our Board of Directors and all of the women and children and families that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. What's next, please?
Next is the consent items, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request for motion as proposed.
I'll move the item. Second? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Zagajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff comments.
I'd like to go to Councilmember Devine first.
Okay. Today, we experienced in my neighborhood a electrical outage. Everything went dark. So, that gave me your respect for Grayson. However, the reason I'm bringing it up is because our GWP staff was on the spot before we knew it. They had it located, the outage located, you know, they defined it, and they had to put in a new transformer, which took them some time, but power was put back, given back to us, restored in about two hours. So, I went out on my street, took this picture of the guys, and you know, what I didn't realize is this is risky business. This is not, I mean, they can get hurt doing this, so kudos to all of them. Thank you, Mr. Zern, for this great staff. Thanks to all those guys that were out there this morning. As I say, LA might have taken two days, you got, the guys had it done in two hours. So, thank you so much. We're very appreciative.
I just want to know if you paid your IBW dues before you started putting out that transformer. We've got strict memos of understanding for that stuff.
They made, they made very sure I didn't fall into that deep hole, I have to tell you that. I did not do a thing, did not do a thing. But thanks to everybody. The other thing I wanted to mention was that I attended on Sunday with Councilmember Sinanian a report, a program that was sponsored by Senator Portantino on the status of women in Armenia, and it was very, very interesting. One of the speakers was Mauro Matosian, who is the Executive Director of the Women's Support Center in Yerevan. I and the audience were encouraged by the progress being made in Armenia in support of victims of domestic violence, progress in education, in awareness, and in support systems given to these, available to the women. They are even attacking the legislation front and getting legislation passed. They haven't gotten as far as penalties, but they're working on it. But it is, was a true example, and I was so moved by this, the importance and the power of women bonding together for a cause, and how they can inspire and bring about change, not only in how people react and are aware, but how laws can come into existence. So, they have, they've made progress, they have a ways to go, but they are working very hard at that, and I know Mr. Sinanian will probably add to that, but it was quite a good conversation, and I thank Senator Portantino for bringing that program to our community. I have two other, one is on requests, and I'm going to ask my colleagues for some help on these. While we're waiting to receive the final Grayson EIR, which is going to let us evaluate the alternatives that we have for the power plant, I'm asking for a second from one of you to, as a request, to staff to bring back in the next two weeks, a report to council for discussion regarding the hiring of an independent consultant or engineer to make a study of the current condition of Grayson. You know, it's our responsibility to keep the electricity on, and I know we have staff that will do that, but in the interim, the task of the consultant would be to give council an estimate of the type and the scope of repairs and estimate a cost of these repairs in order to extend the life of Grayson and keep it running for at least the next five or six years while we are doing the sort of repowering that we finally decide to do. So, I'm asking my colleagues if anyone would second that request of staff.
I second.
Second, so hopefully that study can be brought back.
Is that not contained in the EIR, the condition of the plant, or is it the fact that it's not independent? I'm not sure what the thrust of the request is.
The, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the EIR has alternatives associated with the EIR, as you all know, and we're going to get into quite a bit of detail as it relates to all of those alternatives. I'm not sure that's what the request is, though, based on what Councilmember Devine has brought up.
Right.
An independent study, if I understand this correctly, to be brought back for the council to discuss, to see who we might be able to hire, to assess the power plant as it is today, in its current condition, and provide any sort of feedback to council if we were to have the current Grayson remain as is, what that would entail, and if it's even feasible or possible, which we don't think so, but you know, we can always bring something back to you to make a decision whether you want to move forward with an assessment of that nature.
We hear that it's old, and it's rundown, and it's falling apart, but I'd like to see an exact, exact engineering study of where we are, and if we begin to repower or do some work on Grayson, how long will we be with power? How long will Grayson last? Be up and running? The viability?
And I see Mr. Zern walking up. I mean, I think we have enough information as it relates to today and where we are.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll give you the most recent assessment data, but there have been, that I have found, three full engineering studies done within the last, I'm going to say, 10 years, and those are, I mean, they're voluminous. I gave them to Ms. Godinez in the Attorney's Office. The stack is about that high. I'd be happy to share those, and I can give you the most recent data on what's been operational, what's not been operational, and what the costs have been for that. We can do another study, certainly, if that's your desire, but...
Well, I just would like for council maybe to have an opportunity to discuss that, if we think that, you know, with the figures that you bring in or the studies, if they're 10 years old, you know, I think we need an exact study of where we are today and where we are going to be like in a year while we're discussing and making decisions and perhaps going through with the repowering.
So, I can certainly, one of the things with a study of that nature, when you're looking at the condition assessment, an older study would mean that it's even worse now than it was five years ago. So, I can show you some of those results, give you some current data, because in that short of a period of time, it'll take a lot longer to bring somebody onboard, retain them, and have them do the report. But in the meantime, I can share with you what we have, and then maybe from there, you can see if there's specific information or an overall study, but each of the condition assessments I have read has progressively gotten worse, but I'd be more than happy to share those. Those are public documents.
Can we bring that forward within the next couple of weeks as it relates to us?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Ms. Beers, yeah, I'll put something together and give you an estimate on what that would take.
Let me ask you, is it possible that a company or would have engineers that would be able to come out and do this like gratis for no charge?
I, my personal opinion, Ms. Devine, is I highly doubt that would be the case. I haven't been able to get anybody to do anything gratis.
Any engineers out there?
So, and we have had, for instance, individual...
I know, I didn't tell you. I knew.
We can try.
I knew we could find one. I knew we could find one. Okay.
But we've had a couple of assessments that have been done on specific units, four, five, three, which are the ones that are viable, and we can give you the one and two overhaul issues.
Why, I just think...
So, we can share that.
Okay. I just think it's important that we know where we stand right now, how long this plant is going to be viable looking into the future, and if it's not, what are we looking at as far as cost and repairs as we move forward?
Right.
Just to keep the electricity on.
The other component that I'm going to put back in there, though, is too, as you remember, we discussed last week, it may not be just a mechanical issue, it may be a regulatory issue.
Right, ultimately.
So, that may be, our fate may be decided by that, and I'll just include that information as well in the overall discussion. But I will get back to Ms. Beers on a timeline and how fast I can get that put together and present that to you.
Councilmember Zagajanian, don't go away, maybe...
Yes, sir. Excuse me. When was the last time that they studied the situation of Grayson?
The last one I saw, I believe, was '09, 2009.
2009.
Right. But I'll go back and look. Like I said, I've seen three done by pretty reputable firms. Black &amp; Veatch, I believe, did one. The other firm is, I believe, actually, I think Pace had some involvement in a previous one as well, making an assessment.
And maybe in that report, you can bring maybe some idea of what it would cost if we decided to go in that direction, if we were to get a new study. Do you agree with that, Mr. ...?
What a study would cost?
Yes.
Sure. I can give you an estimate.
Can I just ask a quick question? So, I'm trying to understand, what is the purpose of this exercise? Is there dispute that Grayson is in rough shape and we need to make a decision on it one way or another? Is there a dispute as to that?
Well...
Are we trying to prove that there is or there isn't one?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't want to cut you off, but we, I mean, the request has been made, and I think we're going to start taking the discussion. If Ms. Devine has to answer that question, unless you can do so very briefly, I really would caution you to...
I just feel that we need to, we need to, we hear a lot of nebulous, you know, statements. It's old, it's this, it's that, and I think we need an exact, exact engineering analysis of where we are in Grayson right now and how long we have going forward.
Okay, let me just add one more thing. I think this, the issue of Grayson being old and tired is not a, there's no debate about that, and that's why the city decided to go through this route. But when we say independent study, that's kind of a word that is being thrown around these days, and I want to understand what is the independent study? Because every time we want to get a study done, we put an RFP out, we get proposals, and this council decides who to go with.
Correct.
That's independent study, right? That's, is that what you're referring to, Councilmember Devine?
Or less, yes.
Because if it's an independent study, we put this proposal out, RFP, RFP out, we issue an RFP, and then we get proposals, and the council decides.
Correct. Correct.
Councilmember Zagajanian.
I think what Ms. Devine is trying to say, an independent engineer to review the situation and briefly bring a report, it doesn't take forever and spend millions of... But who decides? That's the question, that's the thing that...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. With all due respect, I think we have a pretty clear direction of what we need to bring back, and we can have that discussed when we talk... I'll bring you what I have, and then you can give me direction at that point in time.
All right, that's good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Okay.
My second, and I have another, if you don't mind.
No, not at all.
I have another request. We've been made aware of an illegal demolition of a dwelling at 1420 Valley View, and because of this blatant disregard for the municipal code, as well as rulings from the commissions and this council, I'm asking for a second from one of my colleagues to request staff to bring a report to council for discussion on what action the city is taking to address the illegal demolition and suggestions on steps that can be taken by council to prevent this type of behavior in the future.
If I may, before that motion is seconded, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is an item that CDD staff and our staff will be working on. Because it could lead to prosecution, I have to caution you against having discussion about that because it's in the enforcement arm of our city right now. If the council wants to have discussion about what steps can be done to deter similar conduct in the future, certainly appropriate course of conversation for the council.
But not case specific.
Correct.
Well, that's what I would like. I would like for that ordinance to come back, and let's look at what the penalties are for this sort of action.
That can be done.
Great. Is there a second for that?
Is there a second for that, yeah?
I'm not really sure what we wanted...
Discussion of the penalties for demolishing a building?
If they're working on it, in my opinion, better, they are going to be in prosecution.
We're working on that particular case, I think...
Let's wait.
Just on that, we can do this for the city, but we can't mention that case, correct?
Correct. And I think, and what I'm hearing, Councilmember Devine, is a request to look at what does our current ordinance require, and are there any additional enhancements that should be put into the code?
Exactly.
And that's certainly within council discretion.
For illegal demolition?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll second that. It's not a problem. We can look into that. Not a problem.
Thank you. I'm finished. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments?
Sure.
Councilmember Sinanian.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Councilmember Devine gave a pretty good report on the, on Senator Portantino's status of women in Armenia talk. It was indeed very enlightening and reassuring, and at the same time worrisome. But thank you for everyone who got up at 2:00 in the afternoon on Sunday, and there were, actually, there were a lot of people there, and a lot of people couldn't make it because there was no parking. So, thanks for coming and showing your interest and your support. Last Tuesday, the Wednesday, Tuesday, we had an event in Montrose called Meet Me in Montrose. Did we talk about that last week? No, we didn't.
No.
And I believe all of us were there, yes, and it was the beginning of a marketing effort by the, by the Montrose Shopping Park Association, Montrose Rodrigo Chamber of Commerce, City of Glendale, meant to, you know, give a little more impetus to the business in Montrose. Great event, great turnout, very promising. And somewhat part of that, on Thursday evening, Councilmember Devine was there, and Councilmember Najarian was there also, we attended the champagne and tea evening at the Tea Room in Montrose. Again, great turnout, very, very promising for what's, you know, what's in the future for Montrose. And that was organized by the Montrose Shopping Park Association. And last Friday night, I attended the Armenian Relief Society's Western USA Gala, which was unfortunately not held in Glendale, but that organization is heavily Glendale-centric, and it was a wonderful event, again, honoring a female organization that plays a great social services role in this community and beyond. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sinanian. Mr. Zagajanian? Non? Councilmember Zagajanian?
I just want to briefly touch Grayson again, and I'm hoping that we will consider and people will think about to have Grayson part of its gas and part of its renewable energy because we went so far in it. So, I want to see that people, they will study, they will look into it. Just being against any gas units, gas turbines, I think will be very costly, and I don't want to see all gas turbines there. So, my suggestion will be to look into it, to have a system which is part gas and part renewable energy rather than one of the other. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I have few speaker cards. Roberta Metford, followed by Frank Gallo. Okay, I have few speaker cards, Roberta Metford, followed by Frank Gallo.
And, Mr. Mayor and council, this is for the community event announcement, portion item six.
Hi, I'm here to make a community event announcement, rather impromptu, but the city will be celebrating Arbor Day on Tuesday, March 6th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Casa Dobe de San Rafael, which is at 1330 Dorothy Drive in Glendale. I know that Mayor Garpetian is going to be there to deliver a message from the city in the nice proclamation, I hope many and all, all of the rest of city council and staff can be there also. The important date, however, is the deadline for tree donations, which is two weeks from tomorrow on February 28th, and Glendale Beautiful has gotten very modern, we have a lovely webpage, and that is all you have to do to get the form to donate a tree, or you can donate online right there at glendalebeautiful.org, so one word, glendalebeautiful.org, and you will be on our nonprofit's webpage where you can find the form to donate. I think that's it, March 6th is Arbor Day observance, and February 28th is the deadline for donating trees. We do have a very able young man who is the chair of Arbor Day, but he has a day job, so Chris Chorbanian will probably be here at a later meeting to make a repeat announcement, but I'm here representing the board right now. So be sure and go to glendalebeautiful.org and either donate online or download the form and mail it in with your check as usual. Thank you very much.
Don't, don't go away.
Sorry?
Hello, so just wanted to, don't go away, Roberta.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Oh, it's okay. So, two days ago, received the photos of the trees donated last year-
Yes.
With, you know-
Yeah, from Community Services and Parks, yes, those, those were the 2017 trees.
Exactly, so I just wanted to say that, you know, folks, when you donate, you donate a tree, you actually end up having a tree, you know, if you donate in someone's honor, in someone's memory.
Right.
It's nice, there's a physical manifestation, you're actually creating green, greenery in the city of Glendale, and honoring their memory or honoring their existence, it's, it's actually a very beautiful concept, so want to encourage everyone to participate this year.
And I should mention that the Arbor Day celebration is arranged by Glendale Beautiful, but in cooperation with Community Services and Parks, and I'm, I'm glad you brought up the tree letters, because you'll notice they were much enhanced, they're, like so many people in the city, they are doing more with less, and they sent a nice picture of the tree and the location so that people can go and have, you know, take their picture with the tree, gather the honorees, gather people that remember the departed, if that's the case of the tree.
Right.
So, thank you very much to Community Services and Parks.
In my case, it was, it was my children, my four kids, so literally this weekend, I'm going to take them up there-
Yes.
-to the Brent Summer Camp area and have them look at their own trees, and I hope that they keep revisiting their trees and caring for it and being connected.
Yes, I, I think, I hope people continue to have nice gatherings at their trees, even, even though the, they're not doing an official picture with the city arborist. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Gallo, followed by Sean Bursell.
Frank Gallo, Glendale Coalition for Better Government. Last week, Mr. Sean indicated that the upgrade of the Grayson Power Plan would not result in increased electric rates. The reasons given were related to reduced reserves requirements and to reduce production costs. In regards to the reduced reserves requirements, I don't see how that will come into play. No money from the reserves, as far as I know, is being used to finance the new plant. If there was money put aside as reserves, how come we are not using that money to pay for the new equipment? In regards to the new, or reduced production costs, I would like to see the cost of service analysis, the cost for the new project. Assuming that interest rates stay at about 4%, what the city got the last time that it put a bond out, 4% of $500 million is $20 million, just in interest alone. If we add to that the amortization cost, another $8 million a year, so that those bonds are paid off in 30 years, you are looking at $28 million a year. Last year, the utility sold $218 million in electric, in electricity, $28 million out of $218 million is 13%. So that would mean that the cost of the utility will increase 13% with a $500 million bond. I would like to see the cost up, because I don't believe that a 13% increase in cost is going to be easily upset by the new equipment, maybe it will, but definitely I would like to see the cost of service analysis. Thank you.
Sean Bursell, followed by Bruce Merritt.
Good evening, my name is Sean Bursell, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society to express our extreme dismay and outrage over the unpermitted demolition of a rare and relatively intact 1908 Craftsman House at 1420 Valley View, which was done in flagrant disregard of the specific directive of this city council, and I appreciate Councilmember Devine bringing it up and asking staff to, to look into the situation. Just briefly, as way of background, in 2016, the owner applied for a demolition permit, staff recommended that it be denied, because the, the house was likely a historic resource, and under the California Environmental Quality Act, you have to do a, an environmental impact report before a demolition permit can be issued. And so, the Director of Community Development accordingly denied the permit request, the owner then appealed to this city council, and in November 2016, this city council upheld the staff determination, they found that there was substantial evidence that the house was in fact a historic resource, and therefore, an environmental impact report was required before any demolition permit could be issued. Suddenly, on or about February 2nd of this year, the house was demolished without the required EIR and demolition permit. It is the opinion of TGHS that the property owner's demolition of this house was both willful and egregious, it was done without a permit, it was done in contravention of the California Environmental Quality Act and the Glendale Municipal Code, and it was done despite the fact that this city council had determined that an EIR must be prepared before a demolition permit for the house could be issued. TGHS hopes to share our dismay and our outrage over this rebuff of the rule of law and the authority of this council, and if the city agrees with us, and, and you, you have your city attorney looking into it, if, if the city agrees with us that a willful and egregious violation of, of the municipal code has occurred, the owner should be held to the strictest account, potentially including criminal charges pursuant to the Glendale Municipal Code. If this flouting of the city council, city staff, and the Building and Safety Code is allowed to go unpunished, we will see more of this, we will see more unpermitted demolitions. We need to remember, what we tolerate, we encourage. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Bruce Merritt, followed by Violet Sacre.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Bruce Merritt, I'm also speaking on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society. This issue that Mr. Bursell just talked about is of such importance, we feel, that it takes more than three minutes to really fully state our position, so I'm going to kind of be the second part of our presentation, and I'm going to talk about the issue of penalty. It's fairly clear what the homeowner in this case did, he looked at what the cost of, of obeying the law is, which was basically preparing an EIR, he looked at what the cost of violating the law would be, which we believe is simply a civil penalty of $1,000, and he made the economically rational choice, that it's, makes more sense economically to violate the law than it does to follow the law. Now, this is a very cynical and a very dangerous point of view, and that's why I think the city needs to take it very seriously. We don't have the expertise of Mr. Garcia on what the, the law actually says, but we've looked into it, and it appears that the only civil penalty that he will have for demolishing a building without a permit is to pay a $1,000 fine, and so it's pretty clear that in today's world, it makes a lot more sense to break the law, pay the fine, and do what you want to do than to obey the law, and this is not an acceptable situation. Now, it would be nice if we could come in and say, fine him $100,000, or $500,000, something that would be a deterrent, but I don't think that that's a possibility. It would be nice to be able to come in and say, tell him he can't develop this property for five years or 10 years, that would be a deterrent, but I don't think that's a possibility. We'd like to come in and say, fine this contractor who comes in on a weekend without a, a permit and demolishes a house, probably knew something was not legal about that, or bar him from ever doing business in, in Glendale. That would, those would be great remedies, those would be deterrents, but as far as we know, those aren't available, and we humbly and respectfully ask that the city take a look at whether or not a revised set of penalties might be a better way of dealing with this situation in the future. Let me also say, though, I, that, that this action is, in addition to whatever the civil penalties may be, it's a criminal matter, it's a misdemeanor, and we would urge the city to take, make serious consideration of bringing prosecution. I was a former prosecutor, I was for a number of years an assistant U.S. Attorney, I have declined cases, I know that not all offenses are prosecuted, but usually the ones that are not prosecuted are inconsequential, technical violations, a demolition of a house is not inconsequential or, or, or technical. This house probably had lead paint, it very likely had asbestos, where is that lead and asbestos now? Is it in the air? Is it in the runoff from the rain? Is it, is it in the soil? We hope that the city will take action that will vindicate the rule of law in Glendale. Thank you.
Violet Sacre, followed by Michael Feinstein, followed by Mike Mohill.
Hello, my name is Violet Sacre, I'm here to talk about the Grayson conversation we had last week, I thank you for taking my comments so early in the meeting, because I have to run, I have a small child. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Sinan for your vote last week in supporting us for an independent study of Grayson, I still don't understand why we have to wait till the end of March in order to start one. Also, I want, I appreciate the comments about the lithium ion concerns for storage, I thought the videos were a little bit misleading, however, I really appreciate the concerns, and hopefully that means that council would consider working with companies who pledge humane and ethical mining practices when we decide to go with renewables. We are also sorry that you felt offended by the gathering and the imagery that was used by the coalition, in no way was this meant to be offensive, we're here to work with you. We hope that in a democracy, you would actually value peaceful engagement from your constituents, and for us to voice our concerns, because this matter, this matter matters to us a lot. We appreciate reliable sources of energy, we totally understand that gas is going to be part of it, we all want the lights to stay on, and we all appreciate the work that GWP does, we just want to have the most inspired and visionary energy plan with an eye to the future, that is sustainable and the cleanest possible that we can have. So, thank you so much for continuing discussing the process, not closing the, you know, the chapter, and I hope, I hope that you see the value in us being engaged and being here to support you in making these good decisions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Michael Feinstein, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Michael Feinstein, former mayor and city council member in Santa Monica, co-founder of the Green Party of California, and a 2018 candidate for Secretary of State. I'm campaigning on an issue that would give Glendale residents more voice in the state legislature, and the city of Glendale more voice in regional planning issues, and I've got a map there on the screen that talks about this issue. The plan is to have a single unicameral state legislature, 500 seats, half of the seats elected from regional multi-county districts by proportional representation, and half the seats elected from smaller, single-seat districts by ranked choice voting. Why go this route? First, the size of the California legislature hasn't been changed since 1879, when we had 865,000 people, now we have a million people per state senate district. There's no way with 40 state senate seats and 80 state assembly seats that our legislature can look like the people of California. A larger seat, a larger legislature has to keep up with our population. Second, we're a nation-state and a state of regions, yet currently, all we do is elect people from individual, single-seat winner-take-all districts, when the reality is, a lot of our economy, our environment, public policy happens on a regional level, and the state legislature enacts policies that affect how we, how we live on a regional level, and yet, there isn't a public policy debate on a regional basis. You here in Glendale are part of the Southern California Association of Governments, I served on that as well when I was on Santa Monica City Council, so what happens when you participate in SCAG is that you're part of that body, and then that body has to go ahead and lobby the state legislature. Why not give your residents the opportunity to participate in a regional public policy discussion itself to start with? And that's what this plan would do. Now, proportional representation is an election where if 20% of the people hold a common point of view, they win 20% of the seats, another 30% has a different point of view, they win 30% of the seats. That way, everybody has a seat at the table of our democracy, and we benefit from the wisdom inherent in our society. Our current system eliminates voices rather than increases voices, and when you're talking about regional planning, in this way, you'd have Democrats, you'd have Republicans, you'd have Greens, you'd have Libertarians, all from the same area, bringing in different perspectives. So, what I'm hoping actually you will do as a city is to give your staff some direction at some point, I saw how easy it was tonight, you just need two votes, and my council, we needed a majority, good for you, and to start looking at this issue and how it would actually increase the ability of your constituents to have a greater voice in state affairs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian, city council, and viewing audience. Mayor Garpetian, last week I came before this council, showing respect to you, council members, and city staff. I told you in the viewing audience that Councilman Arnajarian violated the spirit of our new individual campaign limit law of $1,100. As you know, Councilman Najarian colluded with Mr. Timmy Margarosian in Mr. Najarian's 2017 reelection. Together, they set up an independent expenditure political action committee with Mr. Margarosian as the sole donator of $25,000. Mr. Najarian lectured me that before he was elected to council, there were no campaign limits or ethical laws, and he was instrumental in having these new laws put into place. What Mr. Najarian and Mr. Margarosian may have done was legal, but together they conspired to kill the spirit of our new campaign limit law. What does that say for future campaign laws? Mr. Najarian told me that he may not be able to sue me for defamation of character, but that Mr. Margarosian instead should sue me. Councilman Najarian, Mr. Margarosian should be suing you for your unethical behavior. Now you have tarnished Mr. Najarian's good name in the Armenian-American community. Because he could not handle the truth last week, Mr. Najarian went personal and called me a name that was unbecoming of a public official who sits on council and has the public trust. I was shocked by the language of Councilman Najarian. Afterwards, I received several phone calls from city staff and other people telling me they were offended as well. Mr. Mayor, when Mr. Najarian attacked me, I countered him, but with all due respect, I never use foul language, and after a few seconds of bandering with Mr. Najarian, you told me to stop and sit down. told me to stop and sit down. What I also found offensive was our interim city manager, Yasmine Beers, telling me to sit down. As you know, Mayor, you are the only person who has the right to tell a speaker to sit down, and not our interim city manager or anyone else. Where do we go from here, Mayor Gepedian? Going forward, I do not know what to say or what should I be expected, but a member of the public should always be shown respect, even if one disagrees with council member or the city staff. What happened last week in this council chamber is probably one reason many people would rather stay home than speak their mind before our elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, let Mr. Mohill take a seat, but, just for the record, I, I had 95 speakers last week, and two weeks before that, we had, I don't know, 30, 40 speakers, gave them enough time, respected all of them to speak, we encouraged people to show up to the council, we want to hear from our, our constituents, and Mr. Mohill, last week, I referred you nothing, but, Mr. Mohill, I never, ever said anything foul to you, but the rule is that when the oral communication is over, the speaker will sit down and not have a debate with the council member, and vice versa. But, I, that's what I was referring to last week, and that's what I will refer to in the future. We cannot have this debate and back and forth between public speakers and, and the council members. You can voice your opinion every week, three minutes in the beginning, five minutes at the end of the oral communication, and council members can respond to, to the speakers, but there is no, no debate, as is indicated in the beginning of the, every meeting by our city clerk. So, I'm going to leave it at that, and Mr. Nijarian, I don't know if you want to add something to it, or just, you want to not say anything maybe?
So, no, I know, I get the hint, but, I just want to say that sometimes it's expected that we have the patience of a divine being when we are continually presented with lies and misstatements by members of the public, in particular, Mr. Mohill. If there was any collusion in the last campaign, it was between the Coalition for Better Government, Mr. Mohill, and two others. The Coalition for Better Government did open an independent expenditure, so-called, they didn't feel it was necessary to make reports to the Fair Political Practices Commission to identify their organization, they didn't want to report to that organization, the Fair Political Practices Committee, how much money they received, and they didn't want to report how that money was spent. There is an ongoing investigation against those activities. The activities that Mr. Mohill talked about, his belief that there was anything untoward were reported to the FPPC, and within five days, they issued a letter indicating that there were no violations, no facts sufficient to support a finding of a violation of the Fair Political Practices Act. Those who are curious, it's right here. Mr. Mohill has a copy, but he doesn't seem to believe that, and he continues on attacking me personally on the dais, in his newspaper, let's call it that. Can I call it a rag, or am I going too far? Or, also on the internet. So the facts are clear, he's trying to spin it and trying to bully a member of this council because he stands up for what's right. He's going to continue to do that, and I'm going to continue to respond. But one other item that I forgot to mention last week, is that I have called for an ethics officer position to be created in the city of Glendale. So, aside from campaign limits, aside from conflict of interest laws and campaign rules, I've also, which were enacted, I have recently asked for an ethics officer position to be created. We're currently in discussions with the city attorney and the city manager, and that's the way I play. I play things straight. I do, however, have an apology to Mr. Mohill, and if you look at the tapes, I got to the point where I talked about him scuttling, and I meant to quote T.S. Eliot at that moment, but I was rather upset, and the words escaped me. So what I did mean to say is that Mr. Mohill leaves like a pair of ragged claws, scuttling across the floor of silent seas. That's T.S. Eliot, for you English majors, the love song of J. Alfred Prufrock, and that's what I meant to state, and I went another way, and I used a, a different analogy, which was improper, and this is what I did mean to quote, T.S. Eliot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. What's, what's next on the agenda, please?
Interaction items, item number eight. A is director of finance regarding financial status report from December 31, 2017. Eighty-one is motion to note and file the financial status report for fiscal year 2017, 2018, second quarter ended December 31, 2017, and eighty-two is a resolution of appropriation approving $492,611 in adjustments to the adopted fiscal year 2017-18 budget. Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we here, we are here before you to bring forward the second quarter financial update, and we do have a resolution of appropriation for $492,611, which our finance director will go into detail about. We'll cover our revenues and resources, our departmental expenditures, talk a little bit about our five-year forecast, which hasn't changed from our initial report to you in December, and give you a projected fund balance. And at the end, we will discuss the PERS rate stabilization fund and talk to you about where we are to date as it relates to how that fund is doing, and of course, answer any questions that you may have. With that, I'd like to turn it to Bob Elliott.
Thank you, Yasmine. Well, it's that time of year, February rolls around, we do our mid-year update. I want to thank my staff for all the countless hours that they put in the analysis of this, and I probably don't thank them enough, and they're sitting right there in the front row, so, try. So, let's jump right into the revenues. Revenues are very strong through December 31 of this year, trending slightly above what we received last year. We're increasing our revenue estimates by 1.7 million, and I'll get into the detail of that, primarily the property tax and sales tax. Our property tax assessed valuation went up a little bit over 6% this year, and we're seeing that bump in our revenues as we get into the year. So looking at the, at the detail, you can see where we're at, and, and again, I say this every year, but it's always good to remind everybody, we didn't, our revenues don't come in on a straight-line basis, we get a, a big bump of property tax in December, and then the next big bump, about 40% each time, is in April, so it, it is skewed throughout the year, unlike expenditures, which are fairly straight-line. Keeping in mind, on the general fund transfer from the utility, we do that once a year at the end of June, so that's why this amount is very low at the, this point in time. So our total resources at this point of year is 221 million, that includes some of the use of fund balance that we've gone through and previous adjustments and carryovers, as well as use of our assigned fund balance, which is primarily economic development activities, monies that were set aside for that. So at this point in the year, we're 33% received on our resources. So, looking into the expenditure side of the ledger, expenditures are tracking below 50%, about where we expected them, actually, a little bit less than what they were last year at this time. Everybody is below the 50% mark outside of the fire department, but they had extra costs incurred for the Latuna Canyon fire this year, and, and we're actually, part of the appropriation is for extra costs incurred for them and the police department. Transfers, we received the, the GSA loan repayment in one lump sum, so we turn around and do the entire transfer to the lower moderate income housing fund, and that's why that amount is higher than the 50% mark. Again, you can see all the different departments where they're tracking, again, fire department is slightly over the 50% mark, but those were those, Tuna Canyon fire costs. In total, we're 47.3% on total expenditures. We are proposing adjustments of $493,000 for this point in time through six months. Our updated five-year forecast, we show this every time, we spend a lot of time updating it, as we know, different assumptions change, we try to focus on where we are in our baseline in terms of our expenditures here, our revenues are strong, we, we see strong growth in revenues through the five years, we look at the cost of PERS, which is the, the big cost drivers, you can see where we were and where we're projecting it to be as we go out, and we had a lot of discussions on that with the establishment of the 115 PERS, PERS stabilization trust that we established back in July.
How's that doing?
It's doing very well, and I'll show you the charts towards, towards the end of this. And, and, so you can see the, the impact on the fund balance with the adjustments that we've made this year, and the setting aside of the 26.5 million that we put into that stabilization fund, and I'll show you the, the performance of that. Overall, though, the performance in the five-year forecast, give or take, is still very good. Of course, that's always depending on certain things materializing, and, and we talk, Mike and I talk about that quite often with the general fund transfer, so assuming that still stays put. So we started the year with an $87 million fund balance, we had some use of fund balance in the $3 million, gave us 84, what, projecting for the end of June, obviously, we put the 26.5 million aside, we're projecting to be about $58.5 million at the end of the year, which is about 27%. Keep in mind, we lowered our target rate to, or floor for reserve to 25%, still with a target of 35%, but this remains above that 25%. So the PERS stabilization, we wanted to report back to you every quarter as this goes through, just a reminder how we staged the deposits in three different deposits through August and September of 8.8 million. We put it into the moderate portfolio, the expected rate of return for that portfolio is 5%. Thus far, just in the few months we've had it in there, it's made 4%, so it's done very well, the income has already been about $1.1 million. So, as we expect, the, the expected rate of return, if we divide the 5% for the year, is the blue bar, we've already made the tan bar thus far this year, and as with everything, in all honesty, as we get the, the next quarter, I'm sure there'll be a dip for the market adjustments that happened in January and, and again, this February, but we think we'll still make that 5%. Cumulatively, this is the way it looks as we build that expected return in the year, we're still far exceeding that expectation in terms of the return for that. Again, that money is set aside, we're hoping to have it, earn interest through the 2024, '25 fiscal year, and then we'll start drawing it down as our PERS rates peak in that timeframe, but we can draw that down at any point in time if necessary. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Eliot, I'm not, I'm not a finance person, so if you can explain this to me again, we've already made the 5% that we were projecting for the year?
No.
No.
Not quite.
We're, we're just on the right trajectory, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. We're way ahead of, let me get back to the slide. So, if we divide up the 5% for the entire year, that would be the blue bars cumulatively.
Okay.
So each month, we're making the, the tan bar in terms of, of return, so thus far, we've exceeded the 5% by quite a bit of what we expect to get every month. So annualized, we've already received 4%, so if you annualize that, within the few months that we've had, we'd probably make 12%.
Okay.
For the year.
Yes, that's right.
So, give or take, but we'll see how the year goes and, and, and monitor each quarter.
So if the trajectory or the tendency holds?
Yes.
We'll end up making 12, Mr. The projected 5%?
Give or take, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question about, if I could, about the UUTs, you want to explain the, there's a $700,000 loss, you want to explain that to?
We do have a drop in our estimate of UUT, and we're, here we go, right here, 700,000. This is a result of, and our UUT has been very strong, but keep in mind, it's a broad tax on the electricity, telecom, and video services. Those services are declining in terms of the taxability of those, folks are going to Netflix and Hulu and some of the internet-based TVs, so the tax doesn't apply to those, it's known as over-the-top television. And we've looked at the possibility of changing our ordinance to apply to that, we, there's been a lot of, Pasadena tried to do it and had a, a big storm of protests, so we kind of backed off that idea. But as we look at our UUT, it's strong in some areas, but this is tapering off, so we decided to lower the estimate a little bit.
And?
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Sure, yeah.
So, but even people who are using Netflix or Hulu, they're still relying on the internet, right?
Yes, but it doesn't necessarily have to be through the AT&amp;T or cable companies, where their bill is bundled and, and it's taxed.
Where else would they get?
So it could be wireless, it could be other forms.
Internet?
So, yeah.
Yeah. But, but remember, I mean, if the bill, the UT bill for, somebody uses AT&amp;T U-verse for, and buys a movie, that, that all gets taxed, but if they're using Hulu or something else, then it's not, currently, it's not getting taxed, if they're using a different service, that's, that's the difference.
So the only piece that would be taxed would be the internet service, which is a much lower dollar amount than the cable. So, that dollar amount, correct, is about, you know, depending on, on the type of service they have, anywhere from $20 to $40 a month versus a cable bill where you would have all the channels, et cetera, which would be upwards of 200 and some odd dollars a month. And so that decrease, for some folks, we are seeing a decrease in, in the numbers that we are getting.
And if I may add, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, what we're experiencing now is actually the, the market is shifting, so people are shifting from cable channels to Netflix, Hulu, and that's the area that is not taxed right now, so. And I believe there was a legislature out there, AB 252, addressing what they call the OTT, over-the-top services that they provide, and I think that's still in transition right now, and we still don't know whether we could tax that or not.
And how about the people who have DirecTV and other satellite services? You can't tax them either, right?
The satellite, nor, it's not taxed.
So that's, that's not a way of getting their cable.
Yeah, the cable that was taxed.
Correct.
Questions?
Shift in behavior.
Questions?
Well, I had a question about the fire, fire expenditures, if Chief Fish is here, can you explain about what, how much of this we're going to be reimbursed for, and since you're over, over the 50 percentile?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Councilmember Devine, yes, the Latuna fire was something that we had expenditures in staffing to get people to protect our property, we had 450 acres burned in that fire, and this has been an unprecedented year for mutual aid. I don't, I don't remember a year where we've had people out, so many strike teams out at one time in the months of December and January, so it's been an unprecedented year. As it relates to the Latuna Canyon fire, we have a FEMA FMAG, which is a Fire Management Assistance Grant, we will get 75% of all of our costs reimbursed to us through the Latuna Canyon fire. As it relates to mutual aid, when we respond to someone else... mudslides, we get 100% reimbursement on those costs plus a 12% administration fee. So as it relates to our 51%, a lot of that will be reimbursed. I hope that answers your question.
It does, it does. What was the bottom line on our cost for these fires? Was it like $150,000?
It's going to be about $150,000. It's an estimate that we have right now.
Which is, which is a pretty fair price to pay for what we saved, what you all saved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Gallion.
I just have a question from Bob, Mr. Bob Elliott. On page three, on the chart, which, if we go further down, it says inter-fund revenue, and we have a loss of 500, and right after that, fines and forfeitures. And then we have 100,000 loss? Do I read it right?
So what was your question again?
You're showing?
I was going to say, two different things.
500 and 100, the losses.
Correct. The $500,000 reduction, that's mainly due to the integration with the Tyler Munus system. So we're going through the process of getting a new financial system, and we've already went live with our, yeah, correct. We already went live with the payroll and HR services. So due to that, these are the charges that we're reducing because the new system is actually able to charge directly to multiple funds, where before we used to handle it internally. So I don't know if that?
The word fine, it says?
Fines and forfeitures is the next one down.
Fines and forfeitures.
$700,000?
Oh, I'm sorry. Fines and forfeitures, that's due to reduction in traffic fine revenue that we get. And when we looked at the police reports, actually, the citation that is being issued by the police department, the police department has gone down, so the revenues have gone down also. And so we're estimating that we will probably get about 100,000 less this year.
These citations are like for speeding?
Correct. It's the citations for the?
I don't know how that could possibly be. That astonishes me, that that has gone down, when we have more and more blatant disregard, again, disregard for laws. Wow, okay.
Well, just one thing to remember, and Armin could probably tell the exact dollar amounts, but if somebody gets like a $400 speeding ticket, we only get a portion of that.
Right, right.
So somehow there's, it seems like over the years, there's more and more that gets peeled off for court admin costs and so on and so forth, so.
It doesn't mean that number of tickets issued, citations went down, it's just the courts are taking more from them.
Yeah, our portion, if I can add to that, is about 20% of the citations that are issued, and we're actually in the works with the courts to see if we could get a detailed report from them and to identify what their costs are and see if they've added something along the way and that we were not aware of. So we're actually looking into that right now.
Okay, so the thing I want to understand is that this does not mean that the number of tickets that have been given is down?
That has gone down also. When you look at the police report where it's issued, I believe, on a monthly basis, the traffic violations, the citation has decreased.
Numbers, actually, yeah.
I need to, is there a reason?
And there might be a reason for that, and, you know, it's funny, because we talked about this a couple of days ago when we were reviewing the actual slides for today, and my question was why the decrease, and, you know, they're working with the administration office of the courts to find out why we're getting a lesser amount from them. And the citation piece for us has to do with education, that we are, it's a multifaceted approach as it relates to safety in our community. And so I'm sure the chief can answer this way better than I.
Yeah, where is he?
Where is he? Oh, he's sitting here.
Yeah, I was looking for him.
He's hiding in the back.
There you go. You were hiding.
He was hiding.
He can answer it better.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
So are tickets really, the number of tickets are really going down?
I'm actually looking at the citation data for the calendar year that just closed, and actually, the number of citations for that calendar year, and I know they work on a fiscal year, are actually up 16%. So we're addressing it through a couple of, a couple of things. One is obviously officers each have discretion on how they handle any given individual situation. I can tell you on numerous conversations with the officers, there is frustration from their perspective with the court system, because they do issue the citations, they go to court, and depending on the merits of each individual case, cases can be dismissed, fines can be reduced. It seems that when that happens, somehow, we're the ones who, we suspect, get shorted on that, because what starts as, the base lines for the citations that we have are actually relatively small, but by the time you add various penalty assessments that the courts have, it very easy racks up to $700. And then finally, one of the things that's starting to help us bring this along is we're shifting over to electronic citation writers. So in my day, you had to do it by pencil, and if you have handwriting, like I do, the courts have a hard time reading it, and it comes back for correction. So now our motor officers are all using electronic citations that allow it to print out, allows you to scan the driver's license, put all the data in, and looking this next year, we'll be looking at expanding that, which will make it easier and faster for the officers to issue citations on traffic stops.
I was just figuring they would have riots in the street if they thought that our, we weren't giving citations for all of the infractions that we see.
No, I can tell you that, in fact, I was having a conversation with a friend of mine this weekend, and one of his sons got a citation, and I looked at where it was and what it was for, and it was like, well, it's in an area where we get a lot of citizen complaints, and it's for one of those violations for which we get complaints. So we use a combination of our grant funds and our regular, our regular officers to go out and work particular areas.
Yeah, because I like to, I like to tell everybody you're doing like the best you can, which I know you are.
We have to reconcile between the fiscal year and the calendar year in terms of what finance has and what police has for the numbers in terms of our KPIs. We just need to reconcile that and make sure we're doing it in the same timeframe.
It shifts it out, and I am looking at the calendar years, so.
Thanks, Mayor. So I had a very strange conversation last week where a resident was incensed that we don't, we're not stringent enough. He said, "Our police department used to be much more harsh," and he misses that, and he believes that. Yes, and this was a relatively young person. He said, you know, we, that's the irony of this, right? When you're, when you're harsh, people misinterpret that. Some people see some kind of discriminatory intent in some of it, but then when you stop being harsh, they realize what they missed and what the impact is. So the question was, and I guess you're telling us that's not the case, we're still giving out a lot of citations, but there seems to be a sentiment out there that at least when it comes to traffic or when it comes to just people hanging out and not doing the proper things, where they shouldn't be doing it, like, we're not on top of it, we're not harsh, we don't come down as hard as we used to.
As I said, we've?
Are we short on staff? What's, is that?
There are times that we have officers that are out injured, we have times that we have officers that are assigned to specialized areas, like we spend a fair amount of time around the schools. So obviously, there's a cost benefit to everything that we do. But we have with both our traffic unit, the traffic bureau itself, and with our patrol officers placed renewed emphasis on traffic enforcement. And it's, I guess it is kind of ironic that someone would say that we're too harsh, because most of the time, or we're not harsh enough, because most of the time, the complaints come back the exact opposite way, that why are you giving me a ticket? You know, whether it's as simple as why are you giving me a ticket for not having license plates on my car, or why are you giving me a ticket for the tinted windows, or why are you giving me a ticket for the modified exhaust systems, all of which are routine complaints that we have from the neighbors, all of which we've asked our officers to, to increase their level of enforcement and lower their level of tolerance for, in addition to the normal stuff that we do for, for speed and stop signs.
I think one other thing that we have to bear in mind is, you know, I was talking to some people as well, they were asking the same thing, how come we don't issue more citations? But my understanding was on Glen Oaks Boulevard, there were like 900 tickets issued at one point, and still you couldn't slow them down. But the other issue that we have is because of Prop 47 and AB 109, the type of calls that we get and our resources are good, or go to, is different than just traffic citation. And there are, most of our police officers are responding to more serious crimes than just issuing a ticket for speeding or tinted windows or not having a license plate. So our resources are the same, but our issues have grown, and that's what we are responding to mostly. That's my understanding of it.
I mean, officers have a busy day. Traffic is but one of the things, obviously, that they have to do, responding to calls for service. And as I said, we've all stood here before to discuss the complications of the combination of AB 109, Prop 47, Prop 57, and some of the challenges that that creates for us and where we need to put our resources to try to maintain a safe community. But as I said, that doesn't mean we don't have a commitment to traffic safety. You know, hopefully, whoever you're having the conversation with, that will, that will shift. As I said, usually, the phone calls that come to my office are the other ones where someone's complaining that they've actually gotten a citation for something.
I want to ask the guy to call you.
Please, absolutely, absolutely. It would be nice to hear one where it's like, hey, you guys aren't being tough enough, as opposed to the ones that I normally get where we're being, where we're being too tough, and why didn't your officer give me a break, or, you know, why did they get the citation?
Chief, I think just writing citation is, is not the right thing, in my opinion.
It should be along with education. You just can't just write tickets and say, okay, I solved this problem. I think it should be combined with the education of the offender.
Well, as I said, most people, you know, if they want, if they get the citation and they want to avoid having the insurance rates go up, often go to traffic school, so there does become an education component to it. As I said, we have not taken away the discretion of officers to, to issue warnings, and they do. On the other hands, where we, on the other hand, where we do get the complaints in neighborhoods or where we have issues, we do ask officers to go in and write citations. The issuance of a citation, I think the only study I could ever find is issuance of citations actually do impact driving behavior. It came out of Canada a number of, a number of years ago. It's the only one I could actually, actually find, whereas warnings may not. Though, more recently, there are some experiments going up, up north in San Jose about written warnings and whether or not they're effective. So, you know, we're, we're amenable to try a few different things to see what, to see what works, how it works with the community, and ultimately, how we can change the driving behavior of some of our community and improve traffic safety.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian.
Hi, Chief. So let's, and I've heard it from both sides as well, but let's be clear. Do Glendale traffic enforcement officers have a ticket quota that they must meet?
They do not. Legally, cannot give them one of those, they don't.
For those who get the tickets, say, oh, he's just trying to fill his quota.
No, there is no, there is, there is no quota.
And our officers have the discretion to stop, warn, ticket, and anything else that may develop.
Right, they have, they have that discretion.
And that comes in their training that we?
That's correct.
Offer them extensively.
Okay, that's correct.
I think we're doing a good job, but.
Thank you, Chief. Any more questions, comments on this item?
I do, I have one more, and that's on a, the item from Mr. Galanian requesting $24,000 for the, related to the railroad crossing, quiet zone. Is that unexpected, or is that ongoing, or how did that come about? I thought that was all taken care of.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, councilmember Devine, as you know, back in 2016, we were successful in establishing quiet zones at three of our at-grade crossings at Grandview, Sonora, and Flower. And as part of the process, CPUC, California Public Utilities Commission, had made some additional requirements such as additional safety lighting, signage, and striping that we implemented as part of our application. This $24,000 is the cost of the annual maintenance that will be performed by MetroLink to maintain all these additional signage and striping and lighting, and through a reimbursement agreement that will come in front of you in the next few weeks. So it's an ongoing annual cost of maintenance.
This wasn't in our budget.
This was not budgeted previously because we didn't have an invoice. They have, to this date, they haven't invoiced us, so we're just waiting for that, and we're just preparing in advance.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Is there a motion? So moved. Second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sonanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian?
Yes, next item, please.
AP is Director of Human Resources regarding establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the City of Glendale Compensation Alignment. B1 is the resolution of the Glendale City Employees Association, GCA, and GCA confidential classifications. Two is the resolution of the Glendale Management Association, GMA, and GMA exempt confidential classifications.
Okay, Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, over the last three years, we've been before you during the mid-year budget process to talk with you regarding the compensation alignment process that we have here in Glendale. This process has been outside of the MOU with GCA and the GMA, and it's a process for us to really remain competitive in the market as it relates to our employees and our ability to be able to retain our employees and not be a training ground for our employees to, unfortunately, leave to other municipalities. Mr. Doyle will go into some details regarding the classifications that were studied and the percentages that are out from average, and I, and I want to emphasize average because oftentimes people mistake some of the adjustments that are being made and think that it's something above average. And by way of our compensation alignment and compensation strategies that we've had in place, we strive to be with, within the average and not above that, but not wholly beneath that as well. And so with that, Mr. Doyle, if you can cover the projects with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you are resolutions addressing classification and compensation adjustments for various categories of employees represented by both the GCEA and GMA bargaining groups. This process has come to be known as compensation alignment, where we target specific job categories in areas where we've fallen behind in our competitive compensation structure. These are job classifications where we've experienced difficulty in both the recruitment and retention of our most talented and skilled employees. This process involved a compensation survey of over 40 classifications within the GCEA and GMA bargaining units, utilizing our traditional 10-city labor market comparisons. As anticipated, the vast majority of the job classifications studied were significantly below their labor market comparisons, summed by up to 10, 20, and even 30%. Our objective here was to try and target those jobs that are lagging behind the most in the labor market. You'll see that many of the classifications selected here are highly skilled or professional level positions, cutting across various professions. You see many in the engineering, the IT, telecommunications area, accounting, finance, some of the utility management level positions, fire dispatchers, police, fire inspectors. In addition, our automotive mechanics, which we have many of, which we do have difficulty, again, recruiting and retaining these positions. Recommendations here are to adjust these salary ranges, obviously, depending upon how far below in our labor market average they're off. Essentially, we're adding steps to those classifications that were furthest below within the salary structure system, and gradually, over the course of two to three years, hoping to see all of these classifications brought up to at or near the average. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes. I just raised the question, but since I raised it with you and he and Councilmember Najarian were present, so I want to make sure that people, they may look at this chart, if you can show page two. Can you show on TV? Page two, can you show? Anyway, this, this is long chart, and left side, it says job class, and right of it, it says salary class, and in the middle is classification title. And this goes pages and pages, and I was looking before and just yesterday. Both numbers are same. I thought most of the numbers are same, some of them will change, but they stayed the same numbers. So what's the reason we don't say job class, salary class, and then we have one number and then the classification? What should be the purpose of further down? You have to go further down. Whoever is doing this, go further down.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Agajanian, what those represent for each of these, these resolutions are the job titles, and yes, we've duplicated the, the, what you would call the salary ranges. They're all the same, the one on the right and the one on the left, for each of the job classifications. are the job titles, and yes, we've duplicated the, what you would call the salary ranges. They're all the same, the one on the right and the one on the left, for each of the job classifications. And that's just a function of the new computer system that we have, that we transitioned to in the past year. And future resolutions, we'll just have one column probably on the right indicating the salary range. And those salary ranges are, reflect the Exhibit A, which is further on in this report. If you can look up those job titles and match it with the salary, that are reflected in the salary ranges. So, sorry if that's confusing, but we'll work on improving this, making maybe a little simpler in the future.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Najarian.
So, Mr. Doyle, we have five bargaining units in the city, police, fire, GMA, GCA, IBW.
That's correct.
And every two or three years, we have a master labor agreement with each one of them.
That's correct.
And in that labor agreement, we discuss cost of living increases, raises, and other items as well relating to their employment. We also have a step and column chart, is that what you call it, or a protocol, where people within those certain classifications, based on experience, training, years on the job, can reach a higher level of income.
That's correct.
So what we're doing today is, we have identified about 80, 80 different job classifications, or about 80.
It's closer to about 40 between the two bargaining units.
About 40 job classifications that are being paid below the surveyed average as we determined. This adjustment is giving those classifications a increase in pay to meet the average.
That's correct.
This is not done, this is not a requirement by the labor agreements that we've entered into, but it's a good faith, a good faith effort by staff, management, as well as the leaders of the bargaining groups, in this case, GCEA and GMA, to seek some equity for a certain number of employers, employees. We don't want to lose them to other cities, we don't want them to lose their morale if they stay with us, but it's an attempt to bring some fairness to the system.
That's correct.
So I very much applaud these efforts, not just yours, from the city manager on down, of course, council, like I said, is behind every good decision that the city makes, as well as, I see Gail Stockton, and I'm not sure, who's the GMA? Craig is here. So, thank you for working together, for trying to keep our employees at a very high functioning level. We're still down in terms of total number of employees, we're still asking a lot from everyone, but I'm very happy that we're able to do this, and this is something that we will continue to do going forward as we work through the, as, I guess, as salaries change throughout the region, and as our duties and our number of employees flux in and out.
That's correct. It would be our intent to continue this process.
I'm very happy with that, so thank you.
And just for the public's information, I think we are down about 500 to 700 employees compared to what we had eight years ago?
About 500.
From 1800 to 1300 now?
Budgeted positions, it went from the high 1900s to the high 1500s, but if you include vacancies, you're exactly correct. We're probably in the high 1300s right now, or the mid-1300s as far as actual staff.
Mid-1300s, versus a few years ago that we were at mid-1800s.
Correct, correct.
All right, I agree with my colleague. I think it is important for us to keep the employees that are skilled, and it's very difficult to find. I mean, finding a good help is something else, keeping it is another issue. So it's very difficult to keep good employees if they're not satisfied with the salaries they make, and they're 10, 15, 20 percent below average, average, not top. So that's what we're trying to get them into, to average them out with the comparable cities.
That is correct.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Doyle?
I would just like to say that I'm in agreement. I think it's a good thing to do for our employees. They're giving us extra time for, you know, the same salary that they've been receiving for a long time, and this adjustment is fair, equitable, and I'm all in favor of it.
So I'll move 8B, 1 and 2, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sonanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian?
Yes, next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is city clerk regarding appointing drafters of arguments for and against measure relating to amending city charter relating to the date of the general municipal election. C1 is a motion appointing drafters. Mr. Mayor and council, this is part of a package of reports that come back to you as part of the decision that was made by this council to move ahead with actions to have our elections in the City of Glendale coincide with a general state election date, primary date. So since the council has called for a special election to occur during this June, we now are asking you to appoint drafters for the arguments for. Per our Glendale Municipal Code, there's an order in which they may be considered. That is first and foremost officers of the city elected by the people, followed by appointive officers of the city, followed by bona fide associations of citizens, followed by individual voters. The task before you is a fairly simple and straightforward one, since all of the council members did send to the city clerk's office requests to sign on to an argument for. There were no correspondences for an argument against as a precaution. We also, I myself as city clerk, as elections official, submitted a request to write the argument for, since this is a ministerial adjustment to correct the charter, so it'll be in sync with state law, which we're now being required to follow, along with your interim city manager, Ms. Beers, who also submitted a request to write an argument for. It is up to you to decide how you wish to proceed.
And just so, it is limited to five persons that can sign, so it can either be, you know, the five council members, or it could be three council members and Mr. Kasaking and Ms. Beers, and I think Mr. Kasaking expressed that there was some benefit from having elections official and the chief administrative officer sign that along with council members. That's one viewpoint, the other viewpoint is just to have council members, so.
Counselor Alexander Janian.
I just want to say that we had the choice to move it to November. Of course, would be harder process, but however, these council members will stay longer. So I think this is a good compromise that we do the election in March, and we stay a shorter period rather than stay until November.
That's what I want. Thank you, Counselor Alexander Janian.
Mr. Mayor, I understand the importance of the electoral official to sign on to this and be a proponent of it, because this deals fundamentally with what it is that he does. So I will withdraw my request to be in signatory in favor of the city clerk.
So, thank you, Mr. Councilmember Sonanian. So we need one more council member to withdraw her or his request in favor of council.
I would have to withdraw.
I would happy to withdraw too. I don't know why council members are part of it.
Somebody could just make a motion with.
Okay, so is there a motion to?
They're elected officials.
Well, I also will defer to our city clerk acting as the elections official. I think his name adds much more credibility to this type of action than having five councilmen who will assuredly be, be pointed out, are acting in their own self-interests to extend their terms on council. Therefore, let Artie do it.
Because we need, we need Artie and our city clerk, our interim city manager, and three council members.
I don't think we need like. No, more than five, but it could be, it could be less. So it could be the mayor.
Four council members.
So all four of you are withdrawn?
I would.
You are ready, so I'll open the spot for Artie.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest or recommend, and certainly up to you to decide, to have along with the elections official, the interim, our acting CEO of the city, the chief executive officer, to also sign her name alongside it, so.
So, so we leave it up to you guys this time?
We need a motion.
You have to give it a motion.
And also, if you wanted the mayor, if you want to sign on.
I'll sign on, I don't have a problem with that.
So I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that the city clerk, the acting interim city manager, the mayor, councilmember Devine, and councilmember Najarian be the signatories.
Oh, I thought I took my name off, but that's okay.
Everyone took their names off, but now.
What did you, you put me back on?
Yeah.
I appreciate the faith that you're placing in me, but I would rather defer, yeah, I would rather.
Okay. Is there a subsequent motion? Subsequent motion. I withdraw my motion, I'll move that to city clerk, and don't anyone say no. The city manager and the mayor be the signatories to this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sonanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian?
Yes, next item, please.
Item D is Fire Chief regarding authorize the purchase of Homatro rescue equipment from Fire Service Specification and Supply and a request to dispense with competitive bidding. D1 is resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize the purchase.
Jeff Fish.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, we are in the midst of a purchase of a brand-new ladder truck. If you remember from my presentation earlier, or later last year, we, the ladder truck is the big one, that's where the person drives the back, the tiller person drives the back of the truck, and that is outfitted with a lot of rescue equipment, to which one of the compliments of extrication equipment, which I can show you if Mr. Kasaking would show you the picture in our PowerPoint that I have.
Call it what it is, Chief, that's what we all know it as.
We all know it is the Jaws of Life, sir. So, that's, the Jaws of Life are actually the ones on the left, the cutters are the ones on the right. These are very highly tuned, expensive, but well worth it, extrication equipment. We use these during traffic collisions, when people are trapped, when we got to get through pieces of metal, lift heavy items, that's what we use these pieces of equipment for. These pieces of equipment can basically cut through anything, any piece of metal that there is. As you well know, the titanium and the high-strength steels that are in modern luxury vehicles especially are very difficult to cut with regular extrication equipment. This equipment right here will cut through, and we can basically get bodies out of, anybody out of a vehicle that's entangled through a traffic collision or other means. So it is my request that you fund $57,730 for this rescue equipment, so that we can outfit our new ladder truck with this equipment. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I'll move the item.
And these are on display every year on Fire Service Day.
Yes.
At 21, you do your whole.
Yes, sir. Every second Saturday of May, Fire Service Day, we do a demonstration with this equipment, where we tear vehicles apart, and we basically make perfectly good cars into convertibles, so.
Whoa, 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 is that casting aspersions on convertibles?
No, we love convertibles, that's why we make them.
That's what I was saying, if there's minor accident on my car, I want them to make it convertible for me.
We can do that, sir.
All right. Before we all go into car conversion business, is there a motion?
I moved, so moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sonanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian?
Yes, next item.
E is Director of Public Works. I believe, was there, you know, we did have one card, I believe.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm so sorry, I have one card. Raphael Mo? I'm sorry, before.
It's fine, but I was just here to voice my opposition for this resolution to dispense with competitive bidding, but I guess the motion passed anyway. But my reasoning was, the company Homatro is based in the Netherlands, and if you were to dispense with competitive bidding, you're essentially creating a monopoly on the Homatro company. And from the report I read, the Glendale Fire has been using Homatro equipment for nearly 12 years. So really, Homatro already kind of has a monopoly on the Glendale Fire Department. And what this would set, it would send a message to this company that they can essentially start raising their prices every year, because they know the Glendale City Council and the Fire Department would be purchasing only from them and rejecting all other bids. So I was here to request the opening up the competitive bidding to 100% American companies to submit their bids. And even though in the report it was said that Homatro, which is based in the Netherlands, does have manufacturing plants in the US, manufactured in Maryland, the Jaws of Life, a certain percentage of the profits are still going to go back to the Netherlands. And these are American dollars, city council taxpayer money, why should it be exclusively going to the Netherlands and foreign countries? We should at least be asking American companies, 100% American companies, to submit their bids, and this would have resulted in, I guess, much cheaper options and bids, which could have saved the City of Glendale a lot of money. And, you know, one of the things mentioned in the report was the reasons for dispensing with competitive bidding was having numerous brands would be costly to the training of the firefighters. And, you know, firefighters are great people, have a lot of respect for them, but a lot of them are being paid astronomical salaries, you know, $150,000 a year, up to $250,000. And it's reasonable to expect that they will be able to reasonably adapt to numerous other brands and companies. And the Jaws of Life, it's, there's a lot of other great American companies who make similar products, and it shouldn't be too much hassle in figuring out how to use them. So that was my intent in coming here, but I guess it was already passed, but for further commission.
I really apologize for not.
It's fine, but for further.
Chief is here, I'm going to ask Chief Fish to come back up and answer your questions.
Just for further motions and stuff, if you are going to dispense with competitive bidding, please note, it's basically you're assuring a monopoly on these companies, and, you know, Homatro is based in the Netherlands, and our monies are going to foreign countries. We want to stay American, American-built, American companies only. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just so we're having a discussion about the item that we passed, it'd probably be appropriate for the motion for reconsideration, just to put on the floor so that.
Move to reconsider.
Okay. Second.
Jeff Fish, you heard the concerns of the gentleman.
Yes, the voter.
Oh, we need to have a vote.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
This is just to have.
Reconsider?
Just to begin the discussion.
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sonanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, I did hear the concerns about having American-made equipment. And to be perfectly honest with you, when your life is in danger, when your body is entrapped inside of a vehicle with extremely high tension steel that is evolving every day, every single day, when a BMW is put out for market, these high-tension steels get stronger and stronger and stronger. That's why the fatalities that we see across the nation are fewer and fewer on a regular basis, because the vehicles get stronger and stronger.
And we all know the connection between Glendale and BMWs.
Well, yes, BMWs and other luxury vehicles. I use BMW because BMW truly is at the forefront of having these high-tension steels within their vehicles. They have roll bars, roll cages that you wouldn't even see, but you can actually, Homatro knows all about this kind of stuff. So whether it's manufactured in the Netherlands, whether it's manufactured in Mexico or the United States, I'm looking for the best opportunity to save your life. This equipment is the most effective and most efficient at getting you out of a wrecked vehicle into that surgeon's table within the golden hour. We call it the golden hour because it has the highest propensity for survival should you be in an accident. I'm not looking to have, I'm not looking to save money, I'm not looking for saving American jobs, I'm looking to save lives. And that's the bottom line when it comes to why we buy Homatro tools. Homatro has a corner on the market when it comes to research, they come out and train our people for free whenever there's new technology, and that is not something that you get from Hearst or Amcos or any of the other American brands. So therefore, it is my recommendation that we stay with Homatro, and again, it's based on a lot of research, we've tested the other companies against Homatro, and Homatro always comes out on top of the performance measures.
Counselor Sonanian.
Chief, thank you. I usually am the one who brings up the issue of competitive bidding, but here's a situation where the argument that you make is so. situation where the, the argument that you make is so compelling. We're talking about human lives, we're talking about minutes saving a life. So therefore, I think it's completely justified. And the extra expense that's associated with it is also justified. And even the fact that part of this equipment or, or there's a manufacturing facility in Maryland, it obviates the need for this discussion. So I'll move the item.
I think there's a comment here. Is there a comment? I just, yes, I just wondered, chief, do you have any study that you compare this equipment with other similar equipments in your position in your office?
I do not have it in my office, but we, we, I can produce that information for you if you would like. Again, when you look at the, the industry standard across the, the nation, FEMA, Los Angeles City Fire Department, Los Angeles County Fire Department, Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, we use this, we use these tools because there, you can have interoperability. If we get on a major incident, say at the five and the one thirty-four freeway, we know that if we have Holmatro tools, we all know how to use them, we can, we can use the tools effectively to rescue those people. And again, I have personally, in two thousand and five, when we first started the process of reevaluating this equipment, we moved away from Hearst based on the performance, based on the fact that they're lighter, they're safer, and more effective.
So based on what you're saying, neighboring cities.
Yes.
They are not using American models.
They're using Holmatro.
All of them?
Yes.
Around us?
All of them around us are using Holmatro.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, chief.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
On the same motion that we passed, now we doing it again?
Yes.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian.
Yes, next item, please.
A.D. is Director Of Public Works Regarding Doran Street And Adjacent Streets Improvements Project. E1 is a motion awarding construction contract to Palping DBA Excel Paving Company in the amount of two million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty cents, approving a ten percent reserve for contingency in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand and twenty-three cents, rejecting all other bids and authorizing to execute the contract. Two is a motion authorizing an increase to West Coast Arborist contract in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars and authorizing to execute necessary contracts change order. And three is a resolution appropriating two hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-six cents.
Mr. Lonian?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to have Sarkis Aganissian, our senior civil engineer, to make a short presentation on this routine, rather routine, but significant project upcoming for award.
Thanks, Rick. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, on behalf of the Director of Public Works, I'm here to present to you guys Doran Street and Adjacent Streets Improvements Project, which is in front of you. The scope of work for this subject project mainly involves street resurfacing, Cape Seal, Slurry Seal, as well as, oh, sorry about that, you guys. So the scope of work involves street resurfacing, Cape Seal, Slurry Seal, these are all pavement treatments, pavement rehabilitation measures. It also involves removal and repair of damaged sidewalks, curbs, driveway approaches, construction of new curb ramps to meet ADA guidelines, installation of new stripings, signing of pavement markings, new signal installation at Balboa and Geneva, right across RDY Elementary School, as well as signal upgrades Doran. And there's a portion of sewer lining as part of this project. The project location map is shown here. As you guys can see, the project is going to take place on Doran Street between Brand Boulevard and Adams, as well as the adjacent streets highlighted in red. The red streets, such as Maryland Avenue, Maryland Place, Kenwood Place, Jackson, Howard, Morita, are going to undergo Slurry Seal treatment. Doran is going to undergo a street resurfacing treatment, and a portion of Jackson is going to undergo Cape Seal as well as a street resurfacing treatment. The engineer's estimate for this project was two million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. The lowest bid received was from Excel Paving Company in the amount of two million, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eight hundred and ninety-two, seven, two million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty cents. We also had a optional bid to replace, to remove and replace trees throughout this project, of which West Coast Arborist came in at the lowest bid. We're asking also for a reserve for contingencies in, in the amount of ten percent of the contract amount, as well as a ten percent construction management allocation. The number of bidders on the project, there were six bidders. The funding sources used, that will be used for this project, consist of Senate Bill One, SB One funds, Measure R funds, gas tax funds, and sewer funds. The community outreach that we did for this project involved a, a community meeting that took place with the residents here in City Hall, as well as a meeting with RDY staff for RDY Elementary School. And on top of all that, actually, we, we also mailed out fifteen hundred notifications to the affected community. The project schedule is slated for April of this year to begin construction and be completed, barring any unforeseen circumstances, by August of two thousand and eighteen. The work around RDY Elementary School, as is normal practice for us in Public Works, is to take place during the summer recess and in the event that the work is not completed during the summer recess, we'll be doing some work on weekends, as well as work after drop-off and before school pickup hours. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions?
Councilmember Sinanian. Your microphone. Mr. Councilman.
The lowest bid came in a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars above the engineer's estimate. Is that within sort of the range that we expect bids to come in? Was, I'm saying, was it an unexpectedly high-low bid?
Um, no, it wasn't an unexpectedly high-low bid. It's actually within the range that the bids have been coming in historically. And one of the reasons for this, Councilmember Sinanian, is because the traffic signal portion of this came in, came in a little bit higher than our estimate, but the traffic signal portion is covered by Measure R funds. And one of the items of this motion is to appropriate additional Measure R funds, which we are entitled to.
Okay.
If I can add to that, Councilmember Sinanian, our engineers base their estimates on previous bids, and that continuously changes. So we have really no way of gauging what the bids are going to come in, it's just an estimate based on previous and bids, and it can go up or down depending on the market, depending on whether the contractors, the bidders, have jobs or they're desperate for jobs. So it's a little subjective, but it's only about four percent above the engineer's estimate, the lowest bid.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Agajanian.
When you say your, your engineers, they do the estimate based on former estimates, previous estimates?
Yes, Councilmember Agajanian, so the only basis for our engineers, because we don't construct elements of this construction work, so the only data we have is based on previous work by similar contractors on similar projects. However, we do escalate it for time. If it was two years ago, we do add the inflation to it.
So per se, nobody looks at the equipment, the prices has been changed, went up or higher to have better feeling of what's going on in the market?
That's the inflation adjustment we add to the previous bids, yes. We, we use engineers' news record, they publish every month the Consumer Price Index on equipment, material, and labor. That's what we use, but primarily is based on similar projects in the past.
Thank you. Okay. Any more questions? Is there a motion? Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian.
Yes, next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is oral communication. Discussion is limited, it is not part of this agenda, speaker will be allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision, and city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. First speaker is Chinook Ramirez, followed by Joseph Walpet, followed by Glenn Webb.
Thank you very much. Oh, dear. Thank you. This is a second call to action to the Department of Justice, DMV, ATF, DEA, INS, and ICE to fervently investigate the following list of Latino and L gangbangers and their criminal empires, enterprises who are committing financial crimes, property crimes, and crimes to persons primarily against legal law, Biden citizens, and senior citizens. Let us stop these evil gangbangers from committing home invasion robberies, theft of property, wherever our homework castle is at. We should implement Sharia law and chop off their limbs and tongues for being lying thieves. Now that would end their criminal life and public safety would be restored. Now the license plate numbers are as follows. Seven, M as in Mary, V as in victory, V as in vortex, eight, eight, seven. Next, six, R as in rat, M as in Mary, D as in David, eight, one, four. Next, eight, A as in apple, D as in David, B as in boy, five, three, seven. Next, five, Z as in zebra, E as in egg, J as in Japan, three, zero, five. Next, six, X as in extra, L as in love, D as in David, seven, two, eight. Next, four, H as in Harry, T as in Tom, Z as in zebra, seven, five, five. Next, seven, Z as in zebra, R as in rat, X as in extra, one, three, five. Next, five, W as in world, I as in India, T as in Tom, three, three, zero. Next, eight, A as in apple, Z as in zebra, L as in love, zero, five, six. Next, seven, A as in apple, U as in umbrella, U as in under, seven, seven, six. Next, five, E as in egg, B as in victory, Z as in zebra, two, seven, six. Next, seven, U as in umbrella, L as in love, L as in Lucy, five, seven, three. Next, seven, Z as zebra, W as in world, S as in Sam, four, nine, nine. Next, five, H as in Harry, J as in Japan, Z as zebra, nine, three, two. Lastly, six, D as in David, N as in Nancy, K as in King, three, seven, six. The above-mentioned license plate numbers are owned by vicious, wicked, and homicidal gangbangers, Latinos and non-Latinos. They run several black-market criminal monopolies and illegal drugs, weapons, and contraband enterprises by using extortion and brute force. The cocktail of criminal mayhem includes child, human trafficking, pedophilia, poison, felony harassment, and gang stalking, home invasion robberies, arson, burglaries in residential, commercial, and industrial areas, including storage units, grand theft auto, uh, grand theft auto, homicide, criminal break-in to your motels and hotels where they can hack into your hotel room without a card key. This includes major high-end hotels like Mr. C's Beverly Hill Hotels, Beverly Hills Plaza, Century City Hotels, Holiday Inn, All Marriott Hotels, Sheraton Hotels, and Crown Plaza Hotels, the Ritz Carlton Hotels, and I've stayed in all of them. Just look on YouTube, and if the buffoons at the front desk tell you no one can get into your room, don't believe them. If it's not Filipino maids and servicemen illegally getting into your room, it's a gangbangers. That's why there's a rampant ID and mail theft, not to mention your expensive belongings. That is why, ladies and gentlemen, I carry my shopping cart, which is back there, I carry most of my important things because of years of theft and a string of robberies from each hotel and motel. That's where I've been living. You can only imagine how much money I've spent. Yes, all hotels lie. You can hack open into any hotel and motel door without a card key. Suddenly, I come to find out that many hotels and motels contract out or use an outside vendor to handle their security, they handle their card key hotel security for the doors, which have failed miserably. Do we, as innocent victims, have legal standing and triable issues to sue all hotels and motels and their card key vendors for fraud and false pretenses and breach of good faith and fair dealings? Absolutely. We have invasion of privacy, illegal placing of audio and videos fiber in hotel rooms, which is now becoming an epidemic, deprived of our quiet, peaceful enjoyment, and theft of personal information and personal property, not to mention negligent infliction of emotional distress. And you're being forced to carry all of your belongings around, like I do. So again, this is a revolving door criminal racket by the criminal underworld gangs and the Big and Chilana Cabal and their secret alliance. God bless America and God bless Donald Trump. We got to stop this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joseph, followed by Glenn Webb, followed by Roberta Metford.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Joe Volpe. I've been a resident of Glendale for forty-two years. The other night at a neighborhood dinner with friends, I was discussing the Grayson Repowering Project with Glenn Webb and listening to his vision and plan for a zero-carbon Glendale. Glenn made the scalped potatoes, by the way. He mentioned that he would be at the city council meeting tonight to continue the effort to get the city council to pause the GWP project to replace the Grayson generators with new gas turbines and study clean energy alternatives. That looked to me like a reasonable thing to do, and so I offered to come and introduce Glenn and his credentials so he would have a bit more of his five minutes to talk about his vision and plan. So here I am to do just that. Glenn Webb received his undergraduate degree from Purdue University in aeronautical and astronautical engineering. He is a rocket scientist. He then received his master's degree in electrical engineering and computer science from UCLA, and then studied business and finance at the USC Graduate School of Business. He's an underachiever. He had a twenty-six-year career at Lockheed designing electronic systems for military aircraft. He had a second twenty-six-year career consulting in the fields of pollution, control, clean air, and finance. Over that period, he had over one hundred and seventy-five client companies, including some you may have heard of, like General Electric, Lawrence Livermore National Laboratories, Toyota Motors, and the U.S. State Department. For each and every one of these companies, he studied their pollution control and clean air problem, proposed a solution, and manufactured the equipment for the solution in his factory in Riverside. For over twenty years, he was licensed real estate broker in both California and North Carolina, and purchased and managed residential and commercial income properties for his clients. Over the past fifty years, he has proved, provided financial planning advice to his clients and has prepared over three hundred personal corporate and partnership tax results for himself and clients. He is a creative guy, both in the kitchen and la, and laboratory. I think you should listen as he tells you about his plan for a reliable zero-carbon electric energy system for Glendale, and how we can get there in five years at a cost of less than the proposed GWP's five hundred million dollars. Thank you for your time. I think I heard new thinking from the council members earlier this evening. This leads to a future that we're all going towards, which is to use renewable energy that does not eat up our planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Webb, followed by Roberta Metford, I don't know if she's here or not, followed by Raphael M. Mo?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Glenn Webb. I'm a twenty-five-year resident of Glendale. I listened to the status update presented by GWP and their consultants last week. I was disappointed at the conclusions reached after four or five years of study and an expenditure of some eight million dollars. I think we can do better. In particular, three assertions made during that nearly one-hour presentation made me want to jump up and, jump up and say, what? First, I heard someone say that we could float a five-hundred-million-dollar bond, pay back the bond plus interest, and it wouldn't affect our electric rates. I kept thinking, where is that alternative universe where there is such a thing as a free lunch? Second, GWP and the consultants said several times that they have looked at clean energy solutions like solar and that they are not practical or are too expensive. To that, I say, seriously? To that, I say, seriously? Let me explain. 10 years ago, I purchased and installed on my home a system with 69 solar panels. I paid $5.50 a watt for those panels, 15 times what they cost today, 35 cents a watt. Those panels have an efficiency of 13%. Panels today are 50% higher, 22%. Three years later, I installed a second system with 32 panels, and I paid $3.50 a watt for those, only 10 times today's costs. Those panels I mounted on trackers, which follow the sun, produce 40% more electricity than fixed panels. I also installed a complete battery backup system with electronics and automatic switching. This system uses 100-year-old lead acid technology, like the battery in your car, and costs $600 per kilowatt hour of storage. Today's technology is made-in-California lithium ion technology, and including electronics ready to plug in, costs $300 per kilowatt hour. Several years ago, we had an outage in our neighborhood. My wife and I were watching television, and we got a call from our next-door neighbor. She said all the power was out and asked why our house was the only one on the block with lights on. We were not aware of the outage. We had not been affected at all. Third, I heard a statement regarding battery storage. They said that, too, impractical and too expensive. To that, I say, seriously? I did it seven years ago with 100-year-old technology. Today, it's half the cost of only seven years ago and falling. As for costs and investment, the systems I installed in my home cost much more than they would today. I put them in anyway, and today, I'm less than one year away from having recouped 100% of my investment through reduction in my GWP bill. Less than 11 years for old technology and expensive technology. I have a vision of what we can achieve in Glendale without any new gas turbines. GWP stated we already have 64% of our electric supply from zero-carbon sources. I ask, why not 100%? They've been studying for four years and have concluded that the answer is four new gas turbines. I've been studying for a month, and I conclude that we can get there with zero carbon in five years at a cost of less than $500 million. Did anyone ask GWP or their consultants to come up with a plan for a zero-carbon Glendale in five years? Why have we not asked them to do so? This is what I will do for the council. I will return next week for my five minutes to discuss solar energy and to correct some grossly inaccurate and misleading information presented to you by GWP's status report last week. I will give you up-to-date information on solar technology and how we might achieve a more effective implementation approach in Glendale. Then, in two weeks, I'll return and use my five minutes to do the same thing with battery storage technology and reliability. I'll discuss what our real power needs are in emergencies and natural disasters, as well as under normal operating conditions, and how we can meet them. Then, at the request of at least three of the council people, I will return in three weeks and spend 15 minutes to give you a detailed of my ideas and a plan for achieving zero-carbon in Glendale in five years at a cost of less than $500 million. I will do this and not charge you $8 million for it. I would request that the council ask GWP and their consultants to do the same, to return in three weeks and present their plan in 15 minutes for a zero-carbon Glendale in five years. They have a lot of talented scientists and engineers. Surely, they can do better than one 70-year-old retired scientist. When you've heard my plan in three weeks and at least one other that I know is in process, I think you'll be in a better position to make a decision on whether to proceed with the GWP plan or pause and study a clean energy future for Glendale. Thank you for your time. I have copies of this presentation with, I'll leave them with the clerk, along with my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is Roberta here, Metford? No? Followed by Dan Brodmann, followed by James St. Albin.
Good evening. I've lived in La Crisena for nearly 20 years, and I'm here to speak in opposition of the two "Welcome to Glendale" concrete signs installed in the middle of Foothill Boulevard on Pennsylvania and Lowell Avenues. Besides the design of those signs being quite ugly, I mean, they look like tombstones in the middle of the road, the signs are a blatant traffic hazard, which have already caused two traffic collisions, placing the public at risk and wasting our taxpayer money. It will only be a matter of weeks before another car crashes into them, which makes these signs a liability issue for the city, a concern which has already been shared by many of my neighbors as well. But I'm afraid that there was an ulterior motive or hidden message in the placement of those two signs, which I believe was a way for Glendale to obnoxiously slap the residents of La Crisena in their faces and a way for Glendale to assert its dominance over the annexed La Crisena portion. The Crisenta Highlands section of Glendale has more in common with the unincorporated section of La Crisena than with the rest of the city of Glendale, and this sign will probably decrease property values since the name Glendale carries with it the stigma of overdevelopment, mediocre schools, and horrible traffic. Those who are in support of these concrete signs point out the fact that there already exists blue sidewalk-mounted signs welcoming citizens to the city of Glendale, and those in support claim that no controversy came from those blue signs, which stated the same message. But immediately underneath those blue signs are signs that proclaim the area as being the Crisenta Highlands District of Glendale, a very important designation which the new concrete median signs do not have. We are simply asking for Glendale to acknowledge and incorporate the La Crisenta name into these concrete signs, as currently the message can be misleading to passing motorists or tourists who traditionally associate Glendale with the downtown district, i.e. the Americana, Glendale Galleria, skyscrapers, et cetera, et cetera. I want to mention that the city of Glendale has two other signs placed in the median at Verdugo Road on the intersections of Broadview Drive and La Crisena Avenue, which welcome the public to the Spar Heights District of Glendale. So if you have signs that say Spar Heights District, then why not erect a concrete sign in La Crisena that would have said, "Welcome to the Crisenta Highlands District," or something else that would include the La Crisena name in it? This got me wondering as to why the city does not have concrete welcome signs in far South Glendale. Hmm, is it because Glendale is ashamed of associating itself with the gang-ridden, dirty, dilapidated, illegal alien, gangbanger areas of far South Glendale? Interesting. Mr. Mayor and City Council, tear down these signs. But on a more positive note, I would like to congratulate and thank the city for continuing its local ban on marijuana, and I hope the city will maintain this ban for eternity. Marijuana is a vile, despicable drug. It will kill you, but unfortunately, the state has made it easier for our kids to get by legalizing it. In fact, I constantly see middle-school kids smoking marijuana outside the schools. But not to worry, because our wonderful President Donald Trump and Attorney General Jeff Sessions will be cracking down on rebellious rogue states like California, which have illegally legalized marijuana and have disobeyed federal law. I know the council will revisit this issue in the coming year, but I'd like to remind everyone that cannabis is still illegal in the eyes of the federal government. No questions about it. And finally, as an announcement to the public, if you would like to report suspected illegal aliens, please call the Homeland Security ICE hotline at 866-347-2423. Report and deport. Glendale police must work with ICE and Homeland Security to deport the criminal illegal aliens, gangbangers, so-called dreamers, must go. No DACA, no amnesty. Put American dreamers first. America first. To conclude, I want to remind everyone to stay away from drugs, stay away from marijuana, read your Bibles, exercise your constitutional rights, report suspected illegal aliens to the ICE hotline, and vote Republican. Thank you, and God bless Donald Trump. Oh, and can the city install more comfortable chairs for the audience, because my rear end is hurting? And I know other city councils, like Burbank, they have these auditorium-style seating with the armrests and the cushions, and they fold down. And I know Burbank has a nice mural in the back, so stop being so cheap, Glendale. You need to provide for the comfort of your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our gentle manner compensates for the chairs not being very, very comfortable. Dan Brodmann, followed by James St. Albin.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. That's kind of a hard one to follow.
Do your best, Mr. Brodmann.
I want to respond to some of what we heard at last week's council meeting, and I have at least three pages here and more at home, so obviously, I won't finish it in my five minutes. But like a good Charles Dickens novel, I'll just keep coming back and giving you updates. Firstly, I heard some very good and insightful points from everyone on the dais last week, and from staff, and from the consultants. And I do mean everyone, even those of you who don't necessarily support what we're doing. Despite claims that we are ideologues, we're always listening, and we're always willing to respond to new information as it's presented. And let me say one thing that you haven't heard much from me. I do very much appreciate the success that Glendale Water and Power has had in increasing the renewable portfolio, and for all of you for supporting their efforts. I also appreciate some of the other things they've done. For instance, I was one of the, I think, one of the early adopters of the SEVA program. I hope you all use the SEVA program at home, so I can get on my phone and using the Home View app, I can tell you exactly how many kilowatt hours I've used today. It's a great tool, and I've made a lot of use of it. So you don't hear me say these things a lot because you know our time up here is very precious. We get a few minutes, and there's so much to say, and so sometimes it goes by the wayside. But I do want to say, I'm sorry if it seems like I'm not aware or recognizing the good things that the city is doing. I certainly am. Okay? With that out of the way, I heard several things from the dais last week, which I can't let go without a response. There were things that were said about us, about the Glendale Environmental Coalition that I think were dismissive and frankly insulting to a large number of people. First, it was suggested that the crowd that turned up last week was somehow a bunch of people bust in from far and wide, who don't really reflect the Glendale community. The implication was that, you know, they shouldn't be telling us what to do, and what they said doesn't really matter. So let me correct the record on that. We estimate conservatively that 500 people came here last week, those opposed to the Grayson Project. I'm not including the union folks that came. We had a sign-up sheet, and this is how we know this. We had a sign-up sheet downstairs. People were signing in, and on that sheet, we collected 420 names and where the people are from. They put their city of residence. We know a lot more people directed directly into the overflow room, so there were a lot more than 420, but we got 420 names. I looked over those names, and I made a list of where the people were from, and 60% roughly are from right here in Glendale. That's something like 300 Glendale residents physically making their way to council on a Tuesday evening. I don't think that's something that council should wave its hand at and disregard. I don't think those people are too impressed when they get written off like that. All right, and the point about some people being from Sacramento, I thought, was unnecessary. We had one expert come down from Sacramento, as you know, and by the way, he had a lot to say that the council would have benefited from. Unfortunately, he had only five or six minutes to speak. But anyway, let's move on. It was suggested that we want to deep-six the EIR. I think that's a bit of an exaggeration. What we've been saying is we want to pause. The work that's been done does not go in the trash can, and I think we've been very, very clear about that. We suggested pausing because the EIR is fundamentally flawed. It's asking an outdated question. It's asking what the best gas solution is to replace Grayson. It's not asking what's the best energy solution to replace Grayson. This is clear from the way we went out to find the consultants. The criteria that we established was experience with gas-fired generation technology. We did not seek out people who know zero-carbon alternatives. That was how the RFP was put together, at least according to the staff report. So forget the conflict of interest issue for now, although I think it's an important issue, but let's forget that for now. The fact is that we look for people specifically to give us a gas solution, so we should not be surprised that they gave us a gas solution. They compare that solution to a few oversimplified alternatives, but they are not expert in the alternatives. This is the crux of the problem. This is why we see little point spending additional time and money completing the EIR. But okay, it's virtually finished, and you want it to be presented to the public, and I get that. That's a fair point. I have no problem. Having said that, we should not be wasting precious time and sitting on our hands until March to start investigating alternatives. At this point, we do not know the true extent to which we can meet our needs without combusting fossil fuels. We need to find that out. We need to find that out as quickly as possible. I believe it behooves the council to get that started sooner rather than later. To be continued. Thank you.
Thank you. James St. Albin, followed by Bill Weisman.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for letting me speak. Dan was a nice, was a good cop. I'm going to be the bad cop. You know, Councilman and Jerry, and I thought your comments last week were ill-informed, misguided, and ultimately condescending and disrespectful to the citizens of Glendale like myself, who want a hydrocarbon-free energy source for our city. We realize reliability is an issue, and we don't look to compromise reliability. I want to start with a, go into my comments here. I want to address the question of GWP's plans to sell excess power to other utilities, which still seems to be an area of contention. In last week's staff report, GWP said that, quote, "The project does not rely on or contemplate any sales of excess power other than to other entities," unquote. Mr. Zern was very emphatic about this in his oral arguments. But there's a problem here. The problem is that the claim is inconsistent with how the 250-megawatt option was initially conceived. It also can't be reconciled with the claim that the utility rates won't go up as a result of the project. Let's first look at the history. The Integrated Resource Plan that GWP put together in 2015 said quite clearly that the 250-megawatt proposal was, quote, "relies heavily on market sales," unquote. Not just market sales, not just that market sales are a possible option that could be considered, but they are market sales that are necessary for the project to be penciled out. I went back to clips from some of the older council meetings to find out more, and one consultant recommended that GWP find buyers upfront to enter into power purchase agreements to take off excess power. In another, a different consultant said that, and again, I'll quote here, quote, "You only need about 200 megawatts to actually meet your load requirements. The others would be sold down," unquote. And I found that staff report from August 2014, and I found another staff report from 2014, which talks about the cost of the bonds to pay down, pay for the project. In that document, GWP says, again, I'll quote, "A repowered Grayson should create opportunities for new off-system revenues, which would mitigate any rate impact caused by the debt service on the bonds," unquote. The thought process is pretty clear when you look at all this. The idea was to build a big plant, which can serve as a giant insurance policy against transmission lines going down, but because it would be so expensive, the only way to keep rates from skyrocketing would be to sell excess power that it throws off. Or maybe it was oversized because it looked like a good revenue generator for the city. Whatever the motivation, the problem is that between then and now, the market has changed. It is no longer possible to reliably sell excess gas power. I'm curious to what extent GWP followed the advice of its consultants and looked for buyers, but came up short. In any case, once there were challenges on this point, they changed their story. Now they say they are no longer contemplating selling power. But then how do they keep rates low? The whole thing strains credulally. I am happy to compile a dossier of statements and clips documenting the changing narrative if council wishes. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Weisman, that's my last card for tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weisman from far north Glendale. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I heard some things that I felt needed to be addressed from another speaker. First of all, I'd like to let you know that there are a number of people in far north Glendale who like the monument signs. There are a number of people in far north Glendale who have thanked Sharon and I for our work with the city and helping to get the signs installed. If you look on social media, Facebook, and Nextdoor.com, you don't see a whole lot of that side of the discussion, because the people who are in favor and who like the signs are typically shouted down, insulted, denigrated, and a few of them I give a lot of credit for because they've hung in there and continued to, you know, feel free to state their opinion. I hear a lot of hatred and nastiness directed at the city of Glendale, and this really disturbs me because I think our staff and our elected officials really disturbs me because I think our staff and our elected officials are all working together to make this a place where, uh, all of us citizens would like to live. And, uh, there was a comment, uh, the other day, for example, in, in one of the threads discussing the monument signs, and it said, "We need to keep the stink of Glendale out of nine-one-two-one-four." And that kind of thing really disturbs me, as well as many of the other hateful comments, bigoted comments, and I think that represents only a small minority of people who, uh, are against the signs for whatever reason. But the thing that disappoints me the most is the fact that nobody else speaks up to, uh, contradict and to, uh, uh, confront, uh, some of these issues. We're retired. We don't need to be, uh, concerned with, you know, keeping a job or, or a business, and to, to some extent, we've been, uh, absorbing the public outcry. And we want to thank the city for their help, for their patience, and to request again, please, get the monument signs finished as soon as possible and, uh, put this whole thing to bed. Uh, one of the other things that was mentioned tonight was the issue of liability. This is something that keeps coming up on social media. People keep saying things like, "Well, don't they know they're gonna get sued when somebody runs into those?" Well, as a matter of fact, it's the other way around. The guy that ran into one monument, I believe, is gonna be held responsible. I don't know if a lawsuit will be necessary, but will be held responsible, uh, by the city for, uh, the, the destruction of that particular piece of public property. And it really puzzles me because the last time people were here, um, and there were a few speakers that talked about possible safety issues regarding the signs, uh, I'm thinking to myself, okay, well, the city attorney is sitting here. The deputy city attorney also happened to be here, uh, that evening, a couple of weeks ago. We have two of our city council members who are attorneys, and I have yet to hear any one of those four attorneys express any concerns or possible issues regarding liability. And just happens to be my personal opinion based on my experience in, in Glendale, not just with Mr. Garcia, but city attorneys are among some of the most risk-averse creatures in the known universe. And I would think if there were any kind of potential liability issue here, the city would be on top of it, and I don't see that happening. And, uh, I really, really wish I don't have to come up here again to talk about this because it's ridiculous that we should be wasting any time on this when we face important issues like Grayson repowering, like Proposition 64, like spending the money in our public art fund, and so many other issues that should be, uh, concerning this, uh, body without, uh, spending any more time on, uh, the, the anti-sign nonsense, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. What's next, please?
Two, two jerns.
No business, no new business? Okay. Is there a second? Two jerns? Somebody else? We are a jern.